I'd like to call to order the May 2, 2017 Lake Mills City Council meeting. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you take roll call, please? Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Knippel?
Here.
Okay. Corrections and or approval of the City Council minutes of April 18, 2017?
I would like to make a correction to say I wasn't here on April 18.
Yeah.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to delete Blais from the attendance. We're glad he's here tonight. So, and let's take a motion on the amendment. Or do we just do it all at one time?
We can just do it all at one time. He was just making the amendment.
Okay.
Editorial change.
Editorial change. You have one?
No. Blais did.
Oh, well, it's not an editorial change. You mean another one?
No.
Okay. Do you want to call the roll on the attendance as changed? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay. Thank you. All right. Open for correspondence. Anybody like to start? Do you have any, Steve?
I pass that letter on to Ms. Hefe for attending the Rock Lake Committee meeting today, and she'll pass that on. It's just about the follow-up to their questions about the township versus the city ordinances on the peers and docs.
Other correspondents?
I think we all received the one email that we'll all discuss later. And I also had another call this week, and it was concerning walking your dogs down in the main part of town and being courteous. Some feathers got ruffled, and a few folks were not as pleased at what is happening down there after they tend their flower boxes, and they have dogs that come through, and owners let them use them as their bathroom and things like that. So, it's just some comments from concerned citizens that if you're a dog owner, just please be a responsible dog owner, and it'll go a lot further to make our community that much better.
And the back of the buildings downtown are people's yards.
Yep.
They aren't an open area for dog duty.
Yeah.
And we'll have to keep an eye on that and see how that goes.
That's what I had.
I had that same correspondence. So, any other correspondence? No? Okay. Seeing none, we move to questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes, and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. Okay. And looking at an empty room, I think we don't have any comments from the public. So, we will move on to the city manager's report. Steve?
We received a letter from the state of Wisconsin regarding the options on cigarette We originally had been denied the surface water grant, and then they called up last week and said, "If you have it." And after some debate with Vicki, we came to the conclusion that the previous resolution of 1650 did authorize me to sign it and send it back in. So, I signed it and sent it back in.
So, we don't have to take any action on that tonight?
No, there's no action. That's needed, no.
Well, that's good. Thank you.
And that's all I have unless there's some questions.
Anybody on the council have any questions for Steve? All right. Seeing none, we're moving to acceptance of minutes of the Police and Fire Commission of March 16, 2017, and the Library Board of February 20, 2017, and those will be placed on file. That moves us to item eight. Now, on this one, I'd like to do number one first, the council member appointments. All council members get appointed or reappointed because it's the new year. And under that item, I would like to appoint Vicki Schmidt to the Public Works Board. I'd like to appoint Steve Fields to the Parks Board. I'd like to appoint Douglas Fritsch to the Library Board. I would like to appoint, let's see where, oh, reappoint Mike Foster to the Planning Commission, and I'd like to appoint myself to the Economic Development Commission. Is there anything else that I missed? Okay. Seeing none, do we need a motion for that? Yes. Need a motion to approve my appointments.
So, move.
Second.
I'll take Mike's second. And call the roll, please. Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay. I'd like to move on the next part of item A, number two through number 10. What I'd like to do is to move all of them, except I'd like to do a table on number five for the Library Board. So, it would be, should I read those off, or should I wait for somebody to make a motion?
I was going to say, can we make a motion to table number five by itself?
If that's the first motion that comes, yes.
Yeah, let's.
Okay. So, I have a motion to table number five at this time?
Was there a motion?
No.
Okay.
No, this is the first motion I've had.
Oh, Mike made a motion.
I just made it, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. So, I have a motion and a second to table Library Board to the next meeting. Is that appropriate?
Yep, that's.
To the next meeting. It'll come back up, and we'll vote on that. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay. Do I have a motion for the rest of the items under two through 10?
So, move.
Second.
Okay. Should I read those off?
Yeah. Could we read the names off?
Yes. I'd like to read those off. Planning Commission, Pam Lazarus. Public Works Board, Todd Temperley. Parks Board, Boyd Forrest and William Black Thesis. Joint Rock Lake Committee, Robert Valenick. Board of Review, Greg Wertz. Zoning Board of Appeals, Mary Lou Treptow. Economic Development Commission, Wayne Magnuson and Myrna Keen. Ethics Board, William Kiesling, Jr. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'm just going to ask this.
Did I leave one off?
No, no.
Okay.
You got it. I just want to make sure that I'm reading all this right, that the reason that we're tabling that one and not the others, you've talked to all of those, and they're all willing to serve.
All of the rest have applied.
Okay. That's what I assumed.
And I was unable to talk with Ms. Cassidy.
Okay. That's what I was assuming.
So, I'd like to wait and talk to her, so.
I have nothing else.
Okay. Call the roll, then, please. Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay. Item B, I turn over to Mr. Wilkie for city manager appointments.
This is to notify the council that I'm appointing Diane Hopfrich to the Housing Authority Board.
It's a reappointment. And we don't have to act on that, right?
No.
Okay. Item C, miscellaneous licenses. Would you read those names for us, please?
Tavern operators license applications for Jean Schradl and Tara Strasberg.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, would you call the roll? Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay. Discussion, item on D, and decision on the Lake Mills Cars and Coffee application for special event. In our packet, we have the items, and I think I can turn that over to Steve, right?
The motion is to allow Cars and Coffee to have more than one event in a public right-of-way. So, it covers a broad section. Historically, I'm allowed to approve one, and then the council approves the rest of them. They're having them over the summer on Sunday mornings. As laid out in the application, and kind of rediscussed again in the memo, which is they're going to use Church Street from Lake to Campus, and then Campus as far out as they need to based on the amount of people that are attending the event, which could go a little bit past the alleyway that runs between Lake and Campus just west of the old municipal building. They will keep that alley open and allow it to access Church Street to the north. And then that's kind of a flowing area out there. The other area that they're looking at is some of the parking along the west edge of Church Street Parking Lot. A lot of this area they've used in the past. All the conditions are consistent with what we've seen in the past except for the area on the west end of Campus Street. We did have a meeting with all the department heads and the applicants, and we've gone over all the conditions and feel that everything that we needed was taken care of, all the emergency access, sound music systems, garbage bathroom facilities, all that was addressed. So, from a staff perspective, we feel comfortable with this, especially that.
Is there someone that would like to make a motion to approve the resolution for this item?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. That's motion.
Second.
Seventeen, five, one, one.
And the applicants are here if you want to ask them any questions.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second to approve. Would anyone?
Yeah, I've got a few things, because I know we've done this.
Should we ask someone to come up?
Not yet.
No, okay.
Not yet.
All right.
I know that we've, this has happened or occurred quite a few years here in the city, and it's a really good event for bringing lots of folks in from outside of, outside the area on our Sunday mornings. We've had some concerns in the past with some of the neighbors down there. Did we have any issues or complaints last season from any neighbors?
There's one neighbor, and no, we haven't had any complaints recently, although I assume that they have come to the realization that the city's going to approve it unless there's some major issue. And generally, from, based on what we had discussions on with the Police and Fire Department, it shouldn't be an issue. I mean, we've requested to be able to have emergency vehicle access through that site and to be able to have emergency announcements and those types of things. And with the waste, you know, with the garbage pickup and those types of things that they've proposed, it should be pretty clean.
So, I know that they've, historically, they've used a lot of the parking lots area down there behind the buildings right on Main Street. I'm assuming those are all owned, that parking lots all owned individually by the owners of those buildings?
No.
Or is that a city parking lot?
It's a city parking lot. And they've only used the west edge of the parking lot that runs along the edge of Church Street. So, they haven't used all of it. Now, I'm assuming that, you know, maybe other people that have come there. But if you look at it, the largest portion of the attendees are also people bringing cars.
Right.
And so, the other attendees, you know, I don't know that they've taken up a lot of parking space, but we haven't had any complaints in relationship to it on Sunday mornings, yeah.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it starts, this coming Sunday will be the first one?
Yes.
And it goes through the, beginning the first Sunday in October?
Correct, yep.
Every Sunday morning?
I don't know. Is this the first?
Every Sunday morning of the, every first Sunday of the month between now through the first Sunday in October. Thank you for correcting me. Yeah. Would hate to have everybody out there on the other three or four, so, but, and I'm just trying to flip through my thing here to, I gotta find the, find the thing that says here. And it runs from, I had it, starting to set up at 7:00 a.m., starts at 8:00 a.m., and ends at 11:00 a.m.
Yes, that's right, yeah.
Okay. It's just for people who might be, so if you want to see it, you got to get there in the morning, not after lunch.
Not after church.
And not after church, unfortunately. Yeah. Okay. Now, does anybody else have questions?
Yeah, I've got one question. Did you sponsor the event when, there's been some car shows down here in the Commons area on East Lake Street here. Were you part of that?
Yeah, the car show, I was a part of.
Yeah.
We're going to ask you to come up to the mic so the people at home can hear you. We can hear you, but they can't, and I appreciate that, and give your name.
My name's Randy Stenson, and yes, we did, we were the same people that put that show on.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I know it's grown over the years. How many cars do you expect each weekend?
It's pretty weather-dependent. If it rains, we generally get a pretty low turnout, but we could have 200 or 250 cars potentially. It's, you know, just incrementally grown a little bit each year, so that's why we requested a little bit more space just in case, you know, we have a larger turnout than we were expecting.
Okay. Thank you.
How far away from Lake Mills do they go, come from?
It's pretty amazing. We get a pretty good turnout from Illinois, a lot of people from Rockford and the northern suburbs of Illinois, a lot of people, of course, from Madison and Milwaukee. Like, one time, we had a guy from New Hampshire, believe it or not.
He knows a good town when he sees it.
Yeah, exactly. We were pretty impressed with that. But, yep, it's kind of a two-state, tri-state type deal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will you be providing any insurance certificate to the city?
Yes. I've talked with Tyler. We have an umbrella policy with the building down there, and we're going to have a six-event policy for each event. So, we're in the midst of putting that together right now.
Good. Thanks.
Yep.
Yeah, he worked with Betsy.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council or staff?
The only thing we didn't do is read it.
Oh, we haven't read it. Very good. Would you please read this one, please, for us?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
City Council Motion 17-5-1-1, authorizing the temporary encroachment of Church and Campus Street right-of-way by Randy Stenson for Cars and Coffee. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills pursuant to authority conferred by statutes of the State of Wisconsin has established certain standards and procedures for use of right-of-ways within the corporate limits of the City of Lake Mills. Whereas Randy Stenson, 109 Church Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, has requested that the City Council consider allowing a temporary encroachment of Church Street Parking Lot and Church Street from Lake to Campus and a portion of Campus Street as indicated in the attached request. And whereas the city manager and city staff have reviewed the proposed request, and whereas the City Council has reviewed the information submitted and has considered the information regarding the subject, be it therefore moved the second day of May 2017 by the City of Lake Mills Council. That's Section 1, Randy Stenson on behalf of Cars and Coffee, 109 Church Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, is authorized to temporarily encroach upon the right-of-way of Church Street from Lake to Campus and a portion of Campus Street as indicated in the attached request from May 3, 2017 to October 30, 2017. Section 2, that the city manager is authorized to take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said street encroachment. Section 3, that the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this motion to Randy Stenson, 109 Church Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, 53551. The City Council is hereby approved the temporary encroachment upon the right-of-way of Church Street from Lake to Campus, a portion of Campus Street, and a portion of the Church Street Parking Lot adjacent to Church Street as shown on the attached map, and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Schmidt? I'm sorry, Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Moving on to item E, Resolution 1723, authorizing execution of Department of Natural Resources principal forgiven financial assistance agreement. Would you read that, please?
Resolution 17-23, Resolution authorizing execution of the Department of Natural Resources principal forgiven financial assistance agreement. Whereas the City of Lake Mills wishes to undertake a project to replace private lead service lines identified as DNR number 4828-04. And whereas the municipality has applied to the safe drinking water loan program for financial assistance in the form of a loan made by the SDWLP to the municipality of which all the principal will be forgiven at the time that loan dispersments are made to the municipality pursuant to the DNR financial assistance agreement. And whereas the SDWLP has determined that it can provide a loan with principal forgiveness an amount up to $300,000 that it has identified as being eligible for SDWLP funding. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council, the City of Lake Mills, that the city manager and city clerk are authorized by and on behalf of the municipality to execute the principal forgiven financial assistance agreement that contains the terms and conditions of the SDWLP award for the project. The principal forgiven financial assistance agreement is incorporated herein by this reference. The City Council is hereby authorized, the council president, to sign the resolution for approval.
Thank you. Who's the spokesperson for this? Okay, Steve?
This is part of our lead service lateral program, and we applied for this money last year about this time, and I was authorized to apply for the grant, actually the loan, which is principal forgiveness, which technically is a grant. And it's $300,000 to be used towards replacing lead lateral services on private property, which is consistent with what we've been attempting and had in place for the last year. So, we're just trying to finalize the process. And so, they sent us this resolution telling us we had to pass it, and then we had to beg for the sample agreement.
Okay. Do we have a motion for this resolution? I move adoption of Resolution 1723. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Anybody on the council or?
Yeah, I do. Sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt you there. I just didn't want to, didn't want to miss my turn.
Right, yeah.
So, what this does is it allows us to give out grants to local homeowners to replace our lead laterals, or does this give us money so the local homeowners can request that the lead laterals are replaced and we do the work as the city?
Partially, and no.
Okay.
We are allowed to do a lot of different things with this. We can use it as a grant in various ways. We could make, you know, certain types of contributions. We can actually use it as a revolving loan fund.
Right.
We can make them pay back the principal without any interest so that we continue to reuse the money in the future. So, that's up to the council, and that'll have to be made a decision in the future. And the second part was that what was no was?
It's not for us to, how do I put it? For us to go do the work?
No, we do not do the work.
Yeah.
We have to contract, and Paul's actually had all the documents approved by the DNR already as far as what was required. We've had to go through a couple specific discussions of what is actually a residence and a commercial property. And, you know, we've gotten all our minority-owned businesses and disadvantaged business agreements taken care of, and we've gone out and did all our requests for proposals on plumbers who qualify to do the work.
Right.
But technically, what we do is we say, here are the plumbers you're allowed to use. You pick one. You make the arrangements. You pay them, and then we'll reimburse you.
Got you. Okay. That answers all the questions I had.
Do you know how many residents are still affected by the lead laterals, or what an estimate would be to do, to complete, you know, the laterals in a city?
Well, we have someone that's doing that survey, and they surveyed, I'm trying to think, 100 and some properties, 121 properties on Brewster and South Main Street, and 21 had lead. So, at one point in time, we thought there was a potential to have as many as 75 lead services on South Main Street, and it was significantly less than that.
Could you repeat the number that was?
21.
21, okay.
Yes, and some of those are actually, you know, there's lead, a lead service coming into a commercial building, but they're not using it anymore. So, there are a couple situations like that. But I guess from our standpoint, we had thought that at the most, we might have 250 to 300 lead service laterals. But based on a couple projects that we've done, which is Griffith Street, which was originally done in the early '30s, which would have been right at the high time of lead lateral, or lead service usage, there were none. South Main Street, which would have been the prime one, because it was one of the original water mains, and even the main extension was done in relationship to the railroad depot. So, that would have been primary lead lateral services, very few. So, based on that, I think that if we hit 150, I would be really surprised. It's probably going to be more in the 75 range. But, you know, things could change. There's Mulberry Street coming up next.
Mm-hmm.
I think the letters, you might have gotten letters already.
We get letters that said that he'd be calling us to set up a time to come and look.
Right. So, that means you're next on the list, so he should be getting inspections done here in the next 30 to 45 days.
It's interesting. Does that, if they didn't do lead, what did they do it in?
Well, typically, at that time period, lead was the, used by the wealthy people, and cast was used by the rest of the people.
Ah.
So, Mulberry might have a little bit higher ratio. So Mulberry might have a little bit higher ratio, that being said, a lot of them were already copper.
Really?
Yes, so I'm assuming that a lot of people, you know, lead doesn't last as well as copper and plastic, so I'm anticipating that there's a good chance that people changed it out already, and, so it's, but, yeah, we're anticipating that it's not gonna be as severe as we at one time had to project, based on the history of how old the water mains were in most of our streets, but.
I hope it keeps going in that direction.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on this item? Before we walk? Seeing none, call the question.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Moving to Item F, Resolution 1724, County Highway Aid, and, should we read that one?
Resolution 17-24, Petition for County Highway Aid, the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, hereby petitions the Board of Supervisors of the County of Jefferson as follows, one, that heretofore to wit on the second day of May 2017 at a lawful meeting of the governing body of said municipality, a resolution is duly adapted to appropriate funds for the improvement of highway, highways in said municipality at a cost estimated as follows, local municipality share $3,197 to be paid by June 30, County of Jefferson share $3,197 to be applied to account in April, total improvement cost $6,394, two, that the County of Jefferson share of the appropriation does not exceed the maximum of $100 per mile of local roads in said municipality, three, that said municipality is willing to abide by the rules set forth in Resolution Number 2005-02 adopted April 19, 2005, and offer the Jefferson County Highway Department a right of first refusal for the work, four, according to the resolution, City of Lake Mills takes the position of will participate in county road aid this year, wherefore, said municipality requests that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Jefferson grant this petition for county highway aid in the sum of $3,197 in accordance with the provisions of Section 83.14 and Section 83.03 Sub 1 of the Wisconsin statutes, and in accordance with the resolutions of said Board of Supervisors heretofore adopted.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So, move.
In a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second, and this is a yearly event? Yes. Anything about it that is noteworthy, that we should know about?
Yeah, there would be one thing, and that would be that historically, one of the issues with using the county was the prevailing wage act, but that has history, so I don't think that makes any difference on this resolution anymore at all, we don't have to worry about that.
Hmm, in what way?
We used to have to worry about making sure that the county was paying at least prevailing wage, so, we had to go, the county had to go through and make a bunch of special adaptations, and so primarily, we were only using them for maintenance, because maintenance doesn't have to go through the prevailing wage laws, now we can use them for a broader spectrum of opportunities because that's an irrelevant issue.
So do we have the sear marked or ready for what we'll use it for?
No, normally we don't, but generally, it's been asphalt patches and other types of work along that line, let's say that we ended up doing Harvey Road, we would use it towards that fund, there are a couple other things that we can, that we use the money for, a couple years ago, they did all the work on South Main Street, they did all the asphalt patches, all the oil and chip.
And on Harvey Road, we'll only be doing the city half?
Yes, if that's done this year, the county has, or the township hasn't decided if they're doing their half.
Oh, we won't do our half unless they do their half?
Right, yep.
I was wondering about that, I thought that might be interesting.
So, they, they kind of have a process that's significantly different than ours, when the snow melts and they can all get together, they kind of do a road tour, and then they kind of run it by the county engineer to see what it would cost them to make, do certain maintenance improvements, and then they kind of pick and choose based on how much money they have available to them, and so Harvey Road might make it one year and not the next, and so it depends on, you know, we had money this year that was budgeted, you know, historically, our problem was, is that it had to be budgeted, and they came along in, in June and asked us if we would do our share, and it's like, no, we don't have any money budgeted, so.
But they do know that we have to do that now, so?
No, they do, yeah.
Yes.
They do it a little bit different.
Well, we all learn, we learn how they do it, and they learn how we do it. Okay, and will this go through the Public Works Board, then?
No, this is a final here, because we do it every year, it's, we don't run it through the Public Works Board.
But the choice of what gets done, is that done?
Oh, yeah, that's, that runs through the Public Works Board, they, they get the selection, not specifically the $6,100, but what's in the maintenance program.
Mm-hmm.
And public construction.
Any other comments or questions?
Seeing none, call the question, please. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, Ordinance 1177, Petition for Annexation Douglas and Patty Brat Trust, Parcel 018-0713-1113-000, second reading, and I believe we had a request to suspend the rules and go to a third reading, so could we do that at this time if the council so chooses?
Yeah, I provided a letter that, this is the letter that we were waiting on from Department of Administration.
Oh, we got it.
And we did receive that today.
Wow, that's cutting it into the wire.
Right, so, we could, I mean, it was, as long as we received it before the next meeting, but seeing that we have this, if the council chose to, we could?
We could take care of this item tonight?
Correct, and I know that the petitioner was hoping that this could move along sooner than later, so.
Well, I'd need a motion from the floor to suspend the rules and move to a third reading.
So, moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. Would you take the vote on that?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, so this is now the third reading, and does anyone in the council have questions or comments or staff about this ordinance? We talked about it at the last meeting fairly comprehensively, a party is purchasing it to build a home there, that would be accurate, right?
Yes.
Okay, so any other questions or comments on this one? Seeing nothing, would you go ahead and read the third reading vote?
The third reading is just gonna be the title of the ordinance, if that's okay, and then I'll call the vote.
Yep.
It's Ordinance 1177, in ordinance annexing territory to the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 1177. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call the vote.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, that takes care of that. Now, according to my agenda, that looks like we're finished.
Close, yeah.
Yeah, so do we have recommendations for future agendas? Okay, and of course, there can be other things that come up, and usually due during the time between the meetings, so.
Just.
I'll let you know that at the next meeting, I'm hoping you have the consent agenda for the licenses, typically, we do that at the first meeting in June, but we've moved everything up, and the goal is to have it at the next meeting, just to get that done and out of the way as well, so I think that we're in order for everything, I just have to double-check all of my applications being received, so.
We also have some bid documents that'll be coming in, some contract awards for maintenance.
Right, because we have those in the newspaper last week, we had a bunch of them in there.
Yep.
And so those will be coming forward for approval. Okay, well, then?
The construction season starts, right?
Hopefully, if it stops raining.
Water Street, is East Park, Lake Park Place started?
No, we have a contract to have the testing done that we talked about, and I guess we'll see where we go from there. We do have an agreement between all the parties about how it will be handled, but they wanted to have all the testing at hand first, see how it splits up.
Will there be any other construction projects starting that we need to worry about?
Well, Brewster Street will start after Water Street, and Water Street's split into two different jobs, there's, last year when we did the sanitary sewer lining, there were a couple laterals that couldn't be done, there are two that are being done by the contractor from last year in relationship to finalizing the lining, and then there are six that are being done this year by this contractor where they're replacing the whole lateral, and then they're extending water and sewer from basically the driveway out here out to Main Street, and that's part of the Highway 89 project to the south, and then Brewster Drive will be the rest of that major project, and then we have about $1.25 million worth of street maintenance projects that are being done, and we're discussed at the Public Works Board the last meeting, so.
Is access going to be denied to the City Hall?
It's not supposed to for a long period of time, could be for a short period of time, but both City Hall and Parking Lot out there are supposed to be open to access pretty much all the time. The one on, the one in the back of the municipal building is tougher because it's only got one access, whereas the one out here has got four accesses, so keeping that Parking Lot open all the time will be easier, but generally, they move pretty quickly in the course of the day, so, they should be able to get by with whatever they have and pass that, in fact, I think both of them actually start on the west end of the driveway, if I remember correctly.
The work on Water Street might affect Topol's trucks?
Yes, it will definitely, not Topol's.
Oh, no.
Steve's car and trucks.
Steve's, yes, mhm, has somebody told them what we're doing?
Yes, they knew, they knew the start date sooner than I did.
Okay, yeah, that's right, Steve's, okay.
So when we, when we did our work sessions with Mr. Grabo a couple years ago, did we receive a, or an electronic copy?
Yes.
So we have an electronic copy of that, do we have the format that we use as far as how many days in a row we went in work sessions, I can't remember?
Yeah, that's spelled out in the document.
Okay.
He, right in the front, it goes through the whole process that we went through.
Three.
Yeah.
Three sticks in my mind, but may be wrong.
I think the last year we did it, wasn't a full redo, and it was only two meetings, the original one was three full meetings, and they were spread over a longer period of time than the, than the second one was.
Yeah.
I asked Steve to check if he might be available as a private citizen.
Oh, okay.
Did you have a chance to do that?
No, I haven't yet.
Okay, so I thought maybe he would like to?
I haven't, I don't know that I have full access to Mr. Grabo yet, I will test how LinkedIn messaging works.
Well, look into it, because it'd be nice, he did a good job.
Yeah, if he'd like to, if not, I'm sure we can pull it together and do it on our own if we, if we need to.
It'll be just like work.
Yeah, I was just hoping we had an electronic copy, that way we wouldn't have to start out from scratch, so that's good news.
Okay, good.
It's never advised to do those on your own.
No, no.
They tend to get skewed.
Yeah.
Okay, well then, seeing nothing else, I would like to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin's Stats 19.85, Pren 1, Pren G, conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to be involved, and Wisconsin Statutes 19.85, Pren 1, Pren C, performance evaluation data of employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercised responsibility. So we will move into closed session in the other room, and we will not be reconvening in here, we'll just reconvene and close it after we're done.
So I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, call that, please.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, thank you.